Attending the Eagle Scout Court for Brian Axelson, Carter Denyer, and Johnny Proudt. So it's great to see our many successful scouts out there. This coming Wednesday, I will be in Trenton to witness Governor Murphy signing several gun safety laws, including those limited magazine capacity to 10 rounds and outlawing armor-piercing bullets. And I just want to say that again, it's a shame that we actually have to worry that they have not already been outlawed, that outlawing armor-piercing bullets. So I hope that other states will follow the lead of New Jersey to reduce the census deaths from gun violence. And I want to announce our Employee of the Month. Karadad Keys of the Department of Public Works for her commitment and hard work planning and implementing the first townwide swap meet, which was very successful. For those of us attended, thankfully for the Connolly House, we brought in fewer things than we left with, so it was a net positive, but I think a lot of people found lots of treasures on that day, so hopefully that will become an annual event. As we know, one person's trash is another person's treasure. So let me come on down to present a proclamation. June is a very special time of year for many families as we celebrate graduations. And it's nice to see people get together to celebrate an accomplishment, whether it is a graduation from high school or college. But it's also a time of year when we see the headlines in the paper of, you know, the worst possible headline of a recent graduate in a car accident after drinking. Families' lives change forever because of a party with alcohol and underage drinkers. And so it is so important, the work that is being done by MASA and the Coalition, the Madison-Chatham Coalition, and so I have a proclamation to recognize, not only their work, but more importantly, remind families the importance, and as it says right here, "Support for families." The, to make sure they understand, "Those who host lose the most." Don't be a party to teenage drinking. So whereas adults who provide alcohol to those below the drinking age, legal drinking age of 21, are placing those youth at risk for health, safety, and legal problems; and whereas alcohol use by young people is dangerous, not only because of the risk associated with acute impairment, but also because of the threat to their long-term development and well-being; and whereas it is illegal to give or allow your teens' friends to drink alcohol in your home, even with their parents' permission; and whereas anyone found guilty of providing alcohol to youth can face up to $1,000 fine and six months in jail, in addition to any civil action that can be brought as a result of damages or injury related to the offense; whereas adults have the authority and responsibility to our youth to provide them with alternative opportunities by creating adult-free activities; and whereas Drug-Free Action Alliance, through "Parents Who Host Lose the Most," don't be a party to teenage drinking, provides educational materials to raise community awareness regarding this legal and unhealthy practice; whereas the Borough of Madison encourages residents to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages to underage youth and to take the necessary steps to discourage the illegal and unhealthy practice, including the reporting of underage drinking by calling the local police; and whereas being resolved that Madison, New Jersey, not only discourages discourages the use of alcohol by those below the legal age of consumption, but also exhorts exhorts all residents of Madison to refuse to provide alcoholic beverages beverages to those underage youth, and will continue to take the necessary steps to discourage this illegal and unhealthy activity. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Connolly, Mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the government body hereby proclaim June 2018 to recognize, "Parents who host lose the most. Don't be a party to teenage drinking." Thank you so much. Someone like to say a few words?
I just want to say, we all want to say that Lindsey, the Executive Director of MASA, and Craig and myself on the Board of the Madison-Chatham Coalition appreciate the community's support of this important program, and it's an ongoing reminder to parents and children that it's not just a legal issue, it's a health issue, and we need to be aware and, you know, support the growth of healthy kids as they go on to the next phase of their lives. So thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for all your work. Health, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, our health inspectors are busy with nuisance complaints, which typically are concerns about high grass ticks, pooling water that breathes mosquitoes, and rodent control. Second, our public health nursing department encourages residents to continue to be vigilant about seasonal issues, including swimming safety and daily sunscreen use. Next, with an increase in tick-borne illness, it is strongly suggested that residents routinely check themselves and their pets after being outdoors. Tick prevention measures include using repellents, as well as showering once you come in from the outdoors. For further information, go to the Health Department page on Rosnet. Next, we have Let's Walk Madison is a walking group that encourages Madison residents to become physically active. They have a walk scheduled for Thursday, June 21st, at 4:00 PM, and will be meeting up at the Madison Junior School, and the walk will end at the farmer's market. And next, the Hope One Band, sponsored by Sheriff Gannon, will be on site at the Madison Pool on July 30th and August 8th, providing information about opioid addiction. And finally, the Health Department's in the process of putting together a yoga program that will be done at the Madison Pool. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Engineering report, Public Service Electric and Gas Company resurfaced portions of Main Street and Madison Avenue last week over several nights. PSENG also submitted a schedule for installing a new gas main in Greenwood Avenue, currently under construction by Midwest Construction. The unplanned PSENG work will delay paving of Greenwood Avenue for 90 days. PSENG has initiated main replacement construction work on Crestview Avenue as well. Cefellain Sons has completed several hundred feet of new sidewalk on Central Avenue between Ridgedale and Lorraine Road. The sidewalk work approaching Fairview Avenue will continue this week. Curb and drainage improvements on Kensington will likely be initiated by Cefellain Sons next week. Joe Med Contracting has completed a soil removal at Summer Hill Park and plans to complete topsoil and seeding of the Central Avenue Water Main Project this week. Joe Med Contracting will also start sawcutting Elmer Street for the storm and sanitary sewer improvements project this week. Notices have been circulated regarding that. There's hope that the connection to the box culvert in Greenwood Avenue can be completed this week. The crack sealant program is underway this month. All the present roads affected will be Sampson, Pomeroy, Rosemont, Loveland, Gordon, Alexander, Ashland, Norman, Beverly, Broadview, Delwood, Horwood, Holden, Hillside, and Stonehedge. And also, the 2018 sanitary sewer cleaning video and repair work, the bids will be opened up this this week. From the Construction Department, per usual, they're always busy, you know, we have a shared service agreement with Chatham, which keeps our inspectors very busy. But just just to give you a thought of what happens there, they have, just this month, there was 1,870 phone calls, inbound and outbound. They issued 165 permits. They updated, updates were issued, like 27 of those. Inspections performed were 701. Certificates of occupancy, 37. Certificates of approvals was 299. And they processed $189, 189 payments that particular month. They also do Oprah requests, and there were 78 of those. So the construction fees that were collected were over $72,000. It's a very busy office, and they have great people working there, that's for sure. Just a reminder that the second pickup for garbage has been ongoing since May 15th. And also, there is mulch that's available from DPW. You could call down there and they'll deliver it for you. Mechanics, parks, roads, and sewer are doing what they normally do. There's always a little extra work being done. The flower baskets have to be watered. The recreation fields are still being lined because the kids are still playing. And they're now painting the senior center, which is like really good. So now the roads department, besides what they usually do, is they're delivering the mulch to the residents. So if you you think you want something that of that mulch, you know, please let them know. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, the Borough Clerk, Ms. Bailey.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. From the Finance Department, the auditor has completed its work and forwarded a draft audit to the Borough. And the Audit Committee, which is made up of Madison residents, will be meeting next Monday to discuss the findings. And actually, right now, there are only two small comments on the audit, neither of which are too significant, and once the committee is met, the audit will be finalized, distributed to council, and posted on Rosnet. From the Tax Collector, the Tax Collector's Office is working on the upcoming tax sale, which is scheduled for September 27th. The office contacts property owners that have unpaid property tax or utilities from 2017 and notifies them of the delinquency. Property owners that have still not paid will be published in the paper, and if the bill isn't paid by September 27th. A tax sale certificate is sold, which is a lien on the property. The staff started out with 120 properties. That has now dropped to 34 properties. And the employees, Hattie and Chrissy, will continue to work over the coming months to collect all delinquencies. And from the Finance and Administration, Mr. Cody and Mr. Burnett will be attending a conference next week to hear the latest on the state and local tax or SALT deduction on property assessments. This is the program where municipalities can accept charitable contributions in lieu of property tax payments. And the administration will continue to monitor the situation and await guidance from the State of New Jersey on next steps. And in a follow-up to our zoning changes, the Planning Board Planner, Dr. Blixstein, did meet with Borough officials to review the new changes to the zoning code and to answer questions, and that meeting went very well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Mr. Wolkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The Fire Department has recently gone through a period of testing of equipment, and I'm happy to say that everything passed. They initially tested our three fire pumps, which are capable of putting out 1,250 gallons per minute. I had no idea they were that forceful, but at any rate, they all did pass. All of the department's ground ladders were inspected and tested, and they all passed as well. They are tested for weight bearing, as well as general inspection to make sure they're secure. And then finally, every five years, all of our fire service aerial trucks are required by the insurance industry to have a non-destructive test done on the aerial portion of the truck. And again, we passed. So that's all good news. At the Police Department, I have the following. On May 30th, probationary patrol officer Kyle McDermott graduated the Morris County Police Academy and received the Physical Fitness Award and was runner-up for the Firearms Award. He is currently assigned to the Patrol Division, where he's taking part in the Madison Police Field Training Program. Code Three, which is a company that makes equipment for emergency vehicles, will be donating approximately $18,930 worth of equipment, lighting and warming equipment, for our new emergency services vehicle. It's a multi-use vehicle, will house a multitude of emergency equipment. Truck is currently being outfitted in Texas. As an aside, the reason I had asked how come Code Three was so generous, turns out that there will be a trade show with the Madison Emergency Vehicle present with all this nice equipment on it. So it seemed to me like an excellent trade. On June 1st, the Madison Police assisted with the Central Avenue School, I'm sorry, assisted the Central Avenue School with their annual bicycle rodeo. Madison officers were on hand to assist with bike inspections, safety equipment, and escorted bike ride through the center of town, along with our mayor, who apparently did not fall and had safe equipment.
That's right.
Okay. And on June 3rd, the Madison PBA partnered with the Florham Park PBA to sponsor a free fishing derby. The fishing derby was open to children ages K through 8 and was a very well-attended event that apparently everyone enjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Ms. Byrne.
Thank you, Mayor. This week is Little League Week. It's a perfect time to go out and catch a baseball game. And remember, Aaron Judge played Little League. Also with Little League, a parents' group has formed to try and remediate the field. Our fields here in Madison are on a very high amount of clay. And clay gets impacted, and once it gets impacted, it actually becomes dangerous to play on that field because bones can be broken when they fall. So Little League, working with GPW and the Madison Athletic Foundation, are looking to renew the fields and make them safer for play. From the Senior Center, I'm happy to announce that the updates to the Senior Center are, I think they're complete. And on June 18th, there will be an open house starting at 9:30, so you can go down, have a cup of coffee, and see how nice the Senior Center looks. Don't forget to take Carmella's elevator. And on June 14th, the Senior Center's Advisory Committee is meeting with administration and other interested parties to try and redefine what the Senior Center Advisory Committee really is and what it can do to support the Senior Center. The GDC has been busy. The Public Improvements Committee have ordered additional benches and flower planters to be installed downtown. We have one more water fountain, and they are hoping that will be installed very soon. And finally, this week has been an extraordinary week for a lot of people because some very famous people took their lives this week. They are one of 46,000 people who will successfully take their lives this year, and many of those 46,000 are teenagers. I speak for the experience. I'm one of the lucky ones. I'm just asking you, if someone you know seems to be acting off, reach out to them. Tell them you're there to talk to them if they want to talk. Because depression and anxiety are a disease. They are not a mental flaw. And many people suffer from this, and many people get to the point where they can't go on anymore. But intervening and offering your help will very often save a life. Save mine.
Thank you for sharing. Utilities, Mr. Hoover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the Electric Department, the Electric Department has completed installing the postlights on King's Road from Green Avenue to the KRE site. And the electric crew has fixed the flagpole lights in the middle of Green Avenue. A broken pipe shorted the wires, but they were replaced with PVC and new wire. The crews are starting to work on the manholes on Waverly Place to upgrade the wire size and install a parallel circuit, so there is sufficient capacity for any new business or upgrade from store owners. On June 7th, the Electric Department received a work order to cut the power to the movie theater. On June 7th at 9:30 AM, they received a call from the Police Department reporting there was no power on Rosemont Avenue. An Electric Department crew was sent to find out a squirrel had tripped two fuses. Power was restored within a half an hour.
Probably not the squirrel. [laughter]
You're in the process of, the Electric Department is in the process of working with Atlantic Health Rehab Hospital, engineering firm at Fort Geralta Farms. For the Water Department, it's a couple of things that I'd like to report on. First, you should have received your water quality report, okay, in the mail. I please urge you to read it carefully. It reports that the overall quality of our water is excellent. There's no lead, for one thing, and there's a lot of other good things that are happening with our water, thanks to our Water Department. The Department replaced an eight-inch gate valve on Rosdale and Main. The valve was damaged on exercising it for a showdown with PSENG's new gas. Main went through town. The Department would, again, I said this last time, I would like to repeat it, the Department would like to continue to remind customers that the water pumping totals double in, due to lawn watering, okay? Early morning before the sun rises is the best time for the lawn and water system. Watering when the sun is hot wastes 50% of the water due to evaporation. Also, anyone with an irrigation system should have an automatic rain sensor to keep the system off during and after a rain. Remember, it is drinking water that you are spraying on your lawn. And finally, we received a letter, the Water Department received, Mayor Connolly received a letter about the Water Department that states, "On Wednesday, May 23rd, there was a motor vehicle accident where a fire hydrant was hit and caused the Borough of Madison to shut down all water to the Madison Plaza Shopping Center." He would like, he went on, "Mayor, we would like to commend the Madison Water Department and the other departments involved for their quick response and diligence in making this repair and getting the Madison Plaza businesses back on operation in such a timely manner." We have great people working in this town, people who care about their town. Please pass along our sincere appreciation for, and making sure that businesses were able to get back to business as usual." Sent from the Heller Group, from Martin Heller and the Heller Group, okay? That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for sharing. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor and Council received an email dated June 11th, 2018, from Stephen McCain regarding ordinance 26, 2018.
And now we're on to our first of two invitations for discussion. This is, again, is limited to agenda discussions, which there are none tonight, so you can't comment on on nothing. And, or you can comment on any of the resolutions. I will quickly go through those in just a second here, so you know those resolutions. If you want to comment, you will also know them for consent agenda. If you want to comment on any ordinances for introduction, there'll be a second invitation for discussion very shortly. So the--
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This says we're going to do them back-to-back.
Yeah, as I said, as I said that, yeah, since there are no agenda discussions, and since we had the short turnaround, and there are, so there are no ordinances for hearing, ordinances 34 through 37 will have a hearing on June 25th. What I will do is we'll do this in one section here. But let me just go through the resolutions. I will ask anyone that wants to comment on a resolution to come up first, and then I'll ask for any general comments. So the resolutions that are listed today, Resolution 182, awarding a contract to diversify infrastructure services for $206,000 for sanitary sewer cleaning, televising, and repair program. So that keeps our sanitary sewer system top-notch to try to keep as much stormwater out of there. Resolution 183, which is renewing liquor licenses, including club licenses for Center Pub of Drew University, the Elks Club, North Stars Club, consumption licenses for La Legria Restaurant, Tavernette Main Corporation, which is 54 Main, Prospect Tavern Beef and Ale, Waverly Restaurant Group, which is a Bottle Hill Tavern, New Jersey Entertainment LLC, which is Strikes, and Salgino Pub, which is Rocco's, also distribution licenses for Jelma, which is Gary's. Cigar Beverage, which is inactive currently, Trid Corporation, which is Madison Wine Cellars, and Shaw Traders, which is also inactive. So that's, and Resolution 184, proven raffle license for the Huddle Club. 185, temporary signs for the Morris County 4-H Club for their annual fair, July 19th to 22nd in Chester. Resolution 186, raffle license for auxiliary Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. 187, confirming Michael Justima of Madison Hose Company volunteer. 188, authorizing release and restoration bond to the Enterprise Rent-A-Car that was held for improvements on the property. Resolution 189 has been pulled. Resolution 190, authorizing the purchase of two police vehicles, and these are from the police trust vehicle account, total not to exceed 62,000. And then Resolution 191 is to purchase one vehicle from the police operating account, 31,000. We typically buy two new vehicles a year, and one is to replace a, one that came to a short, early into its life. Resolution 192, donation of safety equipment, as noted in the report from Mr. Wolkowitz, from Code Three Safety Equipment Company. And Resolution 193, approving raffle licenses for First Baptist Church of Madison. And Resolution 194, appointment of Ryan Bagley to summer intern position in Electric Utility Field Department. So those are the resolutions you may comment on. Does anyone wish to comment on any resolution? And if you comment on this or the open comment period in just a second, try to keep your comments to three minutes or less, but I will give you a one-minute grace period and ask you to end at four minutes. Does anyone wish to comment on anything in general? Please step forward. Just, so as you step forward, please state your name, your address, write the same on the clipboard, and again, comments, I will give you a one-minute warning at three minutes.
Bob Hannan, 18 Alexander Avenue, 50-year resident. I wonder what recourse we have, if at all, for keeping a neighbor's pet cat off of our property. It's using our garden as a litter box. It stinks from urine in the yard. It's snatching birds from the bird baths and walking on the hoods of our cars to get at the level of the hedges to catch the birds that might be standing in the hedges. We already have a scratched fender. I've spoken to the people, and they're like, "We'll do what we want. There's no ordinance against it." So if it was children, people, bear, dogs, you name it, I wouldn't have a problem. Somebody would be able to take care of that for us. We're at a loss here, and I would like some suggestions.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for answering my first question, which would be, have you talked to the neighbors? So you have.
Yes.
We will refer this to the Health Department and for follow-up, and you'll have your contact information on there, and we will get in touch with you, what steps that we can take to help take care of that issue.
Pretty soon, I would hope.
Yes, yep. We will be reaching out tomorrow.
And one more quick thing, 14 Alexander Avenue. I noticed they dumped the two loads of dirt probably a week or two ago, and they're still not in the hole. It's a mosquito jungle at this point. The caved-in sidewalk is an incredible danger, particularly at night, because there's no cones, there's no flags. If you know it's there, it's fine. A lot of people don't know it's there, and it's actually a miniature sinkhole at this point. The mosquito, the mosquito problem in that, in that hole is unbelievable, and none of us seem to think that two piles of dirt are even going to fill it, so.
Okay. Thank you. So that also will go to the Health Department as a health issue, and I don't know if there's any open building permits on that site, but if so, we will follow through from that approach also.
Would be much appreciated.
Thank you very much for taking the time.
Just need my address here, and that's it? Name and address, or email, or phone?
Yeah, if you could put either phone number or email on there, so we can, you know, we only require a name and address. require a name and address, but that, so we can respond to your issues directly, that would be very helpful. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Welcome, Donald.
Don Brunner, Twenty Revon Drive. I apologize for just walking into the meeting late. I was at a meeting of the Madison Democratic Committee, which is my responsibility to be there. Just have a question for you. I don't know if you discussed this already. What is the council going to do about having marijuana retail stores in town?
Any other questions I need to answer, we'll, I'll take care of these if, at the end.
There was a letter writer who was criticizing the council for not responding to him in March as to having retail establishments for marijuana. I personally am opposed to having legalized marijuana, but I just wondered what the council, have you discussed this, or are you going to discuss it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, Bob. Thank you.
Yep. So to, and the reason I was holding off is to, we did have a dialogue with the last person because it was a specific issue related to his property. Response to this, as we know, no legislation has been put up for vote in Trenton right now. There is a process, or the latest proposed bill, which is combined related to both medical and recreational marijuana, mentions a hundred-and-eighty-day time period for, if the legislation goes through, that towns can set regulations related to dispensaries. So I anticipate that as that progresses, we will be keeping our council on top of the process, and they will take action as appropriate when the time comes. This is, you know, the question, has there been any discussion? When discussion happens, this would not be a contract matter or legal matter. This would be done in open session, so there will be conversations when appropriate. It's, I'm sorry. Yep. Yes, anyone else wishing to be heard? Jesse, welcome.
Hi, Jesse Esposito, Community Police. Just a quick follow-up with any signage, anything going on? I sent the mayor a email referencing the ambulance that is the survey truck. I think that should be addressed by law enforcement for two reasons. It's still with lights and everything on it, the red and blue lights, emergency vehicle status. And God forbid, something should happen, and somebody go to them for help, and they're unable to help. It can cause a pretty big problem. So I think you need to address that. And any word yet on signage and anything else I can inquire about? An update? Something?
Yep. So-- Update on our subdivision process?
We got an initial subdivision survey that was incomplete, so we've engaged a supplemental firm to reflect the monuments and existing easements on that. We should hopefully have that by Friday. We've engaged the borough attorney's office, Mr. Alfieri from Mr. Jacoby's office, to represent the borough, and he has prepared a draft subdivision application that will be presented to the zoning board, but we need this finished work product to make the formal application. And Mr. Alfieri will pursue it, and I'll follow up with the police department on the signage issues. This is the first I'm hearing about the ambulance.
I have a picture, if you'd like.
I'm sure the mayor has it.
Yeah, I'll, I apologize, and I think the email came in while I was away, so I didn't forward it on, but sorry.
And I realized that, you know, during the last meeting, so.
Yep.
But yeah, if you could do something about that, because I really do think it could be a potentially serious situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. We go on to introduction of ordinances. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Ordinance is scheduled for first reading. Have a hearing date set for June the twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen. Will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the Bulletin Board, made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title. Ordinance thirty-eight dash two thousand and eighteen.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating fifty-five thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the conversion of two units at twenty-eight each on Avenue.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-eight dash two thousand and eighteen. Second.
Council discussion. Maureen.
Yeah, I just want to point out to the public that by dividing this four-bedroom apartment into two apartments, we get one more unit of affordable housing in the town. And the town, right now, is involved in litigation about how many units will have to be built here in Madison. So being able to show that we are continuing to build affordable housing is very important.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Ordinance thirty-nine dash two thousand and eighteen.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Emergency Communication Dispatch Desk.
I move ordinance thirty-nine, twenty eighteen.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance forty dash two thousand and eighteen.
Ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating one-hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the Police Department Training Center and Firearms Range.
Mayor, I move ordinance forty dash two thousand and eighteen.
Second. Any council discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions. Will the clerk please read the statement?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discretion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolutions R. one-eighty-one through R. one-eighty-eight and Resolution R. one-ninety through R. one-ninety-four dash two thousand and eighteen.
I'll second.
Any that need to be pulled or any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
Hey, there is no unfinished business. Approval of vouchers.
Current fund, two-hundred-and-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-three cents. General capital fund, forty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars, eighteen cents. Electric operating fund, ninety-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, thirty-six cents. The electric capital fund, nine-thousand-three-hundred, nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars even. Water operating fund, three-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars, eighty-one cents. Water capital fund, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and seventeen cents. And the trusts, one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and fifty-five cents. The total is seven-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-nine dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I move the voucher list.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Ms. Byrne?
Yes.
Mr. Hoover?
Yes.
There is no new business.
I move that we adjourn, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
It would have been eight-thirty if John was here.
It would have been eight-thirty if Johnson--
No, no.
Mike blew it.
Jesse. Don't worry, yeah.
There we go. Thank you for the--
You being good?
Yeah, we could actually consolidate the best argument.
I know.
You know what my wife and I did yesterday? If you and your husband, did your son, did he graduate, Mary?